All right, whenever you're ready, Kareen.
Okay, we all set? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 23 zoning board of appeal hearing. This evening, we will have the same procedure that we have in place. The clerk will read your case. You will proceed to present your case at the microphone. After you're done, you'll be questioned by the ZBA members. After questions, we will go out to the audience for any comments or additional questions, and then we will return to the board for deliberations and then a vote. If anybody has any electronic devices, if they'll silence them at this time. And I will now introduce the board members. To my far right is Jeff Sauer. To my immediate right is Ken Scholes, who is our clerk. To my left is Ken Jarvanen. And to my far left is John Bonner. My name is Kareen Doherty. I'm the chair. And from the planning department is the planning director, Mr. Brian Zakelli. So, board members, we are in possession of minutes from the August 26 meeting. Any comments or edits or concerns?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So they pass. So I guess the first order of business is our continued cases.
Our first case is 98 Newberry Street. This is highway corridor zoned, a nine-month check-in related to a finding docket 23-5038 that was granted on November 27, 2023, to allow for the expansion of the number of mobile homes on site from 72 to 96. Madam Chair, we are in receipt of a letter from McCann &amp; McCann, PC. Dear Board Members, the applicant, Team Our Properties LLC, requests a continuance of the nine-month review conditions for the board's finding decision of the board's meeting November 18, 2024. I met with the property owner and the project engineer last week. Since the ZBA's decision nine months ago, the property has fully surveyed for preparation of the planning board's site plan submission. Adjustments are being made to the plan to comply with the conditions of the ZBA's finding, and test pits have been scheduled for purposes of preparing the storm water report. It is anticipated that the site plan review application and the NOI will be filed in approximately eight weeks. There have been no site changes since the ZBA hearing. So that the ZBA's review of the mitigation measures is productive, we request that the review occur at the board's November 18, 2024 meeting when the applicant is further along in progress. Signed Nancy McCann Esquire.
Any comments from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may, I brought this up last time, and although I'm fine with continuing to November 18, I still feel the purpose of that nine-month check-in was not only for the board to hear how the project has progressed, but also to give the budding neighbors a chance to speak. So it would be my intention at that November 18 that we indeed have an additional check-in nine months from that date when the project has progressed to the point I think we all thought it would be at for this check-in. So that's my comment.
I agree with that, so we can address that at the November 18 meeting. One other question, Brian. I noticed that this was approved on November 27. Are they running into any issues because the project hasn't really started yet?
No, they need to... This is an expansion, so it was not... I believe this was not a variant. I can make sure, but I'm pretty sure it was not a variance.
And it's not mentioned here what it actually was, and I don't remember the relief we granted.
I can find that in five seconds, but I would imagine it is not a variance, and therefore it'd be three years that they would have to start.
The special permit.
Sorry, special permit, in order to start.
Okay. All right, so we're not running into any timing issues.
Nancy would have certainly brought that up, I'm sure. She does all the time.
Madam Chair, if there's no more comment, I'll make a motion to continue this case to November 18.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So docket it for November 18. Onto the next case.
Our next case is 79 Brad Street Avenue, zoned R2. Request for a variance under Table 2 of the Denver zoning bylaw to build an addition 15.3 feet from the property line along Kimball Avenue where 22.3, which is a street averaging, is required. Request is made by Jeremy and Margaret Mitten, docket 24-5081.
Just to interject super clearly, it was a finding, so it's three years.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Hi, board. We just quickly reintroduce ourselves. I'm Meg, or Margaret Mitten. This is my husband, Jeremy. And we are requesting a variance. The application, I think, didn't reflect our new request of having the closest point be 18.1 off of the lot line. We were able to work with our architect to push everything back of the addition while still tying into the existing structure by three feet. So the closest point now will be 18.1. And this design, we feel, is the most suitable for the lot. And we feel that no adjacent properties will be adversely impacted. We did have some lovely neighbors come last time that you heard from. And this closest point will be on the street side, though we hope that, in taking your comments into consideration, that we were able to come up with a reasonable amount of relief of 4.2 feet for that point there at the garage.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, any questions?
I have no questions, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Ken.
I have no questions, thanks.
Ken.
I have no questions.
And John.
Of course I do. Is the TV still there?
No, it is gone.
Great. I'm sure the neighbors are happy about that. If I look at this drawing correct, and you said four feet, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, I think it's three feet, right? You went from 15.3 to 18.1?
Yes, so...
Okay, and does that include the overhang?
Overhang. There is no overhang on that point, so...
And the other point I see that changed was the 19.7 went to 22.5, and that also does not include an overhang?
Correct, yes.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Oh, I actually don't have any questions, but I do have a couple comments. As your husband knows, I also sit on preservation, and he had to come in front of us. And I didn't realize, I mean, I should have by the date, that this was a historical structure, so you're kind of stuck with where it is because demolishing the whole building and moving the whole structure back wasn't an option because you were trying to save the historical structure that the house portion is.
Yes.
And again, you came in because you had to request permission to remove the garage. So especially in light of that, I think the fact that you moved it back is... And still kind of kept the same design. I don't think the design's really going to change, right?
It will change a little bit inside, but we came up with something that we still feel happy with. And the architect was able to make the transitions from the existing structure into the new structure still work within... With that three-foot pushback.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions. So if anyone from the audience has any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, just before you go out to the public, is the garage still angled at the same angle?
Yes, and it is angled mostly because we were trying to be able to pull directly off the street with the way the street is laid out, so that it's parallel for the driveway. And I would also kind of prefer it to be the other angle, but then we'd be much closer. So we tried to come up with a reasonable...
Happy medium.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
So any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, we'll go to deliberations. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate the effort you did in taking the board's comments, and I will vote on this. I will vote favorably on this.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I know it was difficult, and obviously a little bit more money, whatever, to take care of this, but we really appreciate that. So I will vote for this.
Ken?
I'll vote for this, too. The design layout looks very nice. It's going to be excellent.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I think this is going to be... Not only great for you guys to be in the neighborhood, but I think your neighbor's going to be ecstatic that this property is being redeveloped, and I'm sure it's going to look great at the end. So I will two vote in favor.
And I, too, love the design. I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. I even like the fact that the entrance is now on Kimball. I think you did a good job, and thank you for moving it back and taking our suggestions. So yes, I will vote for this as well.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion for 79 Brad Street Ave, zoned R2, docket number 24-5081. The motion is to issue a variance under Table 2 of the Denver zoning bylaw to build an addition that is now 18.1 from the property line along Kimball Ave where 22.3 street averaging is required, and that adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. The reduction in dimensions would not be detrimental to the public good and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your project. It looks nice.
Next one.
Our first and only regular case is 55 Brooksbury Village Way, Route 114A zone. Request for a special permit under Section 9.3 of the Denver zoning bylaw to place 21 seasonal trailers for a period of no more than 180 days between September 1 and January 7 annually, where only two trailers are allowed. Additionally, the applicant is requesting relief related to Section 30.3, D and E, to allow for 45 parking spaces for temporary outdoor display and outdoor sales for spring and summer, April 1 through July 31 annually. Request is made by Nadine Bailey, care of Mackey &amp; Mackey, LLC, docket 24-5082.
Good evening. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Nadine Bailey. I'm with Mackey &amp; Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, 02062. With me tonight is Walmart store manager Jennifer Hodes and project engineer Greg DeBona from Bowler Engineering. Again, this is, like the clerk said, we are applying to amend the 2017 special permit decision that allowed for 36 outdoor display and sales area, increase it by nine spaces, so it's now 45 spaces. And we're also seeking to add an additional 19 storage trailers to the two that are allowed by right under Section 9.3B2A of the Denver zoning bylaw. With respect to the trailers, I'd like to go with that first. The topography of the area in which the building is situated at 55 Brooksbury Village Way is such that there can't be any buildable space to store the additional inventory that the store needs to compete with its competitors. It has an increase of inventory that it experiences for Black Friday, online shopping, and Christmas events. And because of that, they have about an extra 200 pallets worth of inventory that they need to keep on-site to keep those orders fulfilled and to keep, you know, competition with other stores' competitors. So they're seeking to add, in addition to the two they have required by right, an additional 19. The trailers will be situated... If you look at the plan that we have there, the trailers are situated... You can see them in this reddish color right there. They meet all the requirements of the zoning bylaw except for the fact that we are going to need a waiver if you so grant the special permit because you are able to see the trailers from the side parking lots. So they're visible, so we would ask for a waiver of that. But all of the setbacks are appropriate. They meet the zoning bylaw. There'll be 21. Most of the trailers are blocked by the building in and of itself, so you can't see it unless, again, like I said, if you're standing in the side parking lot, you are able to see mostly the trailers that are going to be on the south side of the building. With respect to the storage... I'm sorry, it's not storage, display and sales area, there were, like I said, 36 spaces that are used annually. We're looking to increase... Not increase, I'm sorry. We're looking to increase that by nine spaces, but in addition to that, we're looking for that outdoor display and sales area to begin April 1 and to go to July 31. Right now, it's currently to June 30. So we will be looking to amend the special permit in that aspect as well. We have received comments from the town engineer. There is some concern with the products that's going to be on display and sale in that area, and that there was some concern with whether any enhancements were contained in the potting soil that will be set in that area. If you're looking at the plan, the... I'm going to say the north side with the display areas are... Oh, sorry, are in blue. The north side, yep, that's right there, Brian. If you could just go to the... A little bit to the right, down. That's where the plant racks will be. And then across that private driving aisle to the left, yep, will be where the outdoor sales will have mulch, potting soils. In my memorandum that I sent in with the application to supplement it, I put in that they would be having displays there for fertilizer. That is not true. That was an error I have spoken or communicated with Walmart compliance and fertilizer, and with Jennifer Hodes. And fertilizer is stored in the garden center. That type of a product would not be put outside in the outdoor display area. However, we can't rule out that any of the mixed potting soil would contain some type of enhancement. So there was a question from the town engineer, Mr. King, how we would be storing it outside and prevent situations where there'd be chemical runoff or sediment runoff. And I replied to him, and I know that we probably have to work on this issue a bit, and we can revisit it, absolutely, but as it is right now, those products are... They're wrapped. I can't remember the specific term. Shrink-wrapped. They're shrink-wrapped, they're kept on pallets, and in the situation where there's a rain event, they're tarped. I don't know if that's going to satisfy the engineer, but there are things that we can work on. If there's some other alternatives that the town would like to discuss with that were amenable to that. But I do realize that that was a recent issue that was brought to our attention. I want to make sure. With respect to the outdoor display and sales, we are seeking a waiver of that, some waivers for that as well. There's two that we would be requesting. Section 33F Performance Standard 4 and 33F Performance Standard 11. We're looking for waivers for those. Those... 33F Performance Standard 4 is materials within an outdoor area shall not exceed six feet above finished grade. And Section 33, Outdoor Storage Sales Display F Performance Standard 11, is no outdoor storage, sale, or display area or its associated material shall exceed six feet in height. Only living plants can be higher than any surrounding vertical structure. The plant racks that Walmart uses to display its plants is seven feet, two inches tall. So we would be requesting respectfully a waiver of those two conditions with respect to the outdoor display and sales areas. That is all I have for right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I will start with John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Bailey, as someone who sat on this board in 2017 when we hammered out this initial agreement with Walmart, I probably have more history on it than yourself. But if you can entertain me a little bit here, I just want to get a couple things clear. And Madam Chair, for you with our planning director, so, Brian, we're not modifying the existing decision. This would be a new special permit, and was that now void the old one?
So yeah, this is... You did say that it was a modification, but this actually is a new special permit that would supersede the previous.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to be clear. So we're basically starting from scratch.
This has a new docket number.
All right, so in that... I'm sorry, go ahead. I see where you're going.
I just wanted to get that clear for all of our benefit here. So the old decision would cease to exist if we grant this one. Is that... Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, this is supposed to enhance... Yes, that's what it's... The idea is to take everything from that decision and talk about it.
And tailor it to what we're asking for tonight. Very good.
Okay, so...
So we're all on the same page here?
All right, well, I thought it was a modification so that we were going to take that existing 2017 permit and change it in ways, like the increase of the outdoor display and sales by nine spaces.
We are, but it's a new decision.
So would that mean, then, that, for instance, I didn't put in the request that there should be four racks, two sets each, are allowed outside, totaling 16 linear feet?
Yeah, that's a good point, because I was asking that same thing.
So when you were saying... When you went through your... I just looked at your application to see what you applied for.
Right.
Because I did not remember hearing anything about these other sections during my review.
Right, because I approached this as it was a modification.
And that's why I'm asking this question.
And I'm glad that you did, sir. Thank you.
So you need... So you would like the framework of what happened in 2017 to be part of this special permit as well?
Correct.
Okay. Let's start... Because I have a list of questions here, and I don't want to dominate all the time. But let's start with the trailer count. Can you just detail... I understand that we allow two by right for 180 days. But where are the other 19 on your plan?
Do you see those red spaces?
I do, but I count them up. I don't come up with 19.
Because there's two. Each rectangle is two.
And then there's one area where there's four? The larger area?
Yeah. And it looks like there's one with one towards the top.
The northwest?
Right here.
There's a single one off here.
Yeah, that makes nice...
Now, those five spaces are two long side-by-side trailers.
Yes.
Okay.
So I... 2, 4, 6, 8.
It looks like 21 to me.
It looks like 21 to me.
Okay, all right, so I think I understand the trail layout. Let's talk a little bit about, well, I guess my first question would be, and I understand what you're up against. I'm the one who visits your store and noticed these trailers some time ago, and I think I might even talked with the manager at that time.
Yes.
Clearly, it's seasonal, but what other avenues did you explore besides trailers? I mean, I just think that this is, you know, kind of a big ask when we allow two trailers for 180 days, and now you're asking for, you know, 10 times that, right? So, you know, for instance, expanding your building or something to this effect. What other avenues did Walmart pursue short of this?
Can you answer that, Jennifer? I can too, but.
Just identify yourself if you don't mind.
I'm store manager Jennifer of the Danvers Walmart.
And your name?
Jennifer Hodges.
Thanks.
So what different avenues we could do potentially outside of trailers would be an off-site warehouse. So what that would compile of is a on-call driver that would be with a Walmart truck that'd be able to deliver our pallets offsite and then back to site when we need them. So that would increase traffic on the roads and everything, because that'd be on-call for whenever we do receive this merchandise in, to bring it to the off-site warehouse for storage. Another expansion, we are potentially going to expand in 2029, it's kind of a little far away, so right now, it's, expansion is not really on the table for us.
Okay, so it was off-site storage and potentially expansion down the road, if I heard you right.
Yes.
You, you know, based on the 2017 decision of 36 spaces and now to 45 spaces, would you be willing to, through marking the parking lot, delineate this actual space in the way of a footprint? This has come before us before with other box stores for something similar, and I think that's worked for both the town's benefit and your employees' benefit, that they know, hey, here's where we set up, and nobody has to go and read anything, it's kind of there, it's on the pavement, it's marked, yeah, it gets worn through snow and plowing, but I think, is that something you'd be willing to do and take as a condition?
I'd have to defer to you, Jennifer.
Yes, that's something absolutely we can do.
Okay, and how would this area be, you know, I notice there's kind of an opening on both sides, and I see crosswalks, but how would this area be blocked off from cars potentially driving in it?
So currently, we have cylinder blocks that we have wood that goes through it, so we outline it with that for safety reasons, especially at night, we want to make sure it's blocked off, so no one potentially drives through it or at it.
Are those blocks there during the day, though?
Yes, so that stays on the outside perimeter.
So how would a pedestrian, is it just space enough for a carriage to go through, or?
Yes, so it's not enough space for a car to drive through.
And, but you understand the marking I'm asking for is on the pavement, so.
Yes, something on the pavement that would be able to distinguish year after year exactly where that footprint would go.
Okay, and this one, and maybe this is more for you, Ms. Bailey, you know, as we've come to find out over the years, at least I have in sitting on this board, you know, managers, and no disrespect to Ms., how managers change and come and go at many of the box stores. How does Walmart ensure that the next manager coming in understands that there's an agreement with the town, and this is, you know, needs to be passed on in a way that the new manager knows how to manage it and abide by it?
I don't know if Jennifer can speak to that too, but I know that this was a question that had come up, I think, before, and we have addressed it, and I think Jennifer can expound upon it more, but we were aware of that issue.
So Walmart has a town, kind of an area where there's a planning tool, and it kind of goes over how many trailers were allotted per that and any town ordinances we do have. I've entered everything that we have into that ordinance, so any of my salaried coaches, any of my people that come after me will be able to have access to all that information when it comes to the exact parking spaces, the dates, and everything in that. So there wouldn't be, even if I'm no longer at the store on a vacation, on something, and I'm not there for the setup, everyone has access to that, and that goes on until someone edits or changes it.
Am I correct to assume that was not in place, and that's why this violation occurred?
Yes, there is no information entered into that system prior to this.
Okay, and that now is in there, at least the old decision?
Yes, everything that was agreed in 2019, 17.
2017, yeah.
Yes, that was all entered into it.
Okay, well, I want to, you know, again, I don't want to, I'm sure my fellow board members have questions as well. The other thing I would ask, and again, what I've seen just from experience sitting on this board, that these outdoor display areas turn into snow blowers, lawn mowers, these types of items. I would ask that, would you be willing to take a condition of flora only, meaning just living plants? And I'm going to leave Brian and his team and the town engineer to work out mulch and these types of things that may have stormwater management runoff concerns, but would you be willing to take a condition that this is flora only?
Yes.
Very good, I'll yield the floor. Madam Chair, thank you.
Ken.
So with the cinder blocks and the wood, you mentioned, yes, so it's going to stop drivers, but what about at night, you're going to have reflectors on them or LEDs or something?
Yes, we're going to have, we're going to paint them so they are reflective yellow, and then we can also add reflectors to those cinder blocks and those.
Okay. Also, you're going to be losing, what, nine spaces, so I mean, it's already pretty congested. What do you think's going to happen with that? I mean, is this going to push people out further, is there other areas?
Our seasonal doors are open, not year-round, unfortunately, they're only open for seasonality, so that side of the parking lot is not as trafficked. We don't see as many people coming in and out those doors, and we still are within the minimum requirement for parking spaces for the store.
Okay, yeah, so no one really poxes outside anyways, right? So, and plus is, all right, yeah, I've seen it. All right, thank you.
Ken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have any questions about the parking spaces. So on the trailers, you say you want the trailers from September 1st through January 7th. What happens to the trailers on January 8th? They stay there, or they go away?
So I have trailers slotted to get picked up, starting and right after Christmas, December 27th, so that January 7th timeline is just in case there's a delay, so we give enough grace. But I have everything entered into my tool to be picked up sooner than that. Nothing, if I call my person that's contracted, they are contracted, they don't want to charge me more, because if I keep the trailer at my store, I get another month's basically rent on that trailer at my store. So they want it back as much as I want to get rid of it.
So there'd be no trailers on January 8th?
That's correct, yes.
By, you know, in theory?
Yes.
Zero?
Zero.
Or two.
We can have two.
Oh, the two, I'm sorry, the two that were allowed. The two that are allowed. I guess that's all I had. Thank you.
Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've, all my questions have been answered, actually, so I'm good.
And I do have a few questions. With regard to the outdoor racks, have those always been there? And they're only during the summer, so those are subject to the, now it would be April 1st through July 31st?
Yes, the outdoor plant racks facing the doors, are you referring to?
Yeah, well, both of them, aren't there two sets?
Yeah, two sets by the garden door and two sets by the entrance, yes. So those currently are not there, we removed them exactly on the timeline that was agreed.
Okay, so they won't be there for, you know, like holiday, like point setters or any type of holiday plants?
No.
As far as the items that you're storing in the 21 or proposed 21 storage units, or storage containers, are those only for your location in your store? You're not storing any for another location?
No, that's all unique to our store, for any of our Black Friday and Christmas events, it's everything that's in-house for us.
Okay. And now I have a question for you, Ms. Sackely. As part of the, as part of kind of the brief or the presentation, we have all of these waivers that are mentioned, but they are not in the application. Do we have to notice waivers?
So you, any type of relief has to be, does have to be applied for in the, in the application. What happened here was that they basically didn't apply for everything that they already had, and they're just getting, so we can, we can still go forward as is, meaning that the 2017 and 2019 variances have been granted, they exist, they're going. This is going, this can sit on top of that, even with a new docket number. So every, so 17 and 19 can still exist, all those decisions, and this can go, this can go further as a new docket without modifying that old one. So technically, right now, what they're, they're here just to ask for the, for the few things that they, that they, that they asked for, and they're not asking for the relief that they already got.
Well, but one of the waivers that they're seeking pertains to the visibility of those storage units, so if they didn't have the storage units, how could they have applied for that relief?
So, yeah, I guess that is a good, so if, yeah, I'll leave that up to you.
So I would say that because the storage containers were never part of the 2017, 2019 decisions, that it would, my approach was that it was a modification, like an amendment to add the storage trailers. But I, also my understanding was that we wanted to keep everything on one plan, on one, in one space, instead of having these piecemeal 2017, 2018. So I thought that by doing a modification amendment, that would just solidify everything that, ooh, sorry, I keep doing that, just solidify everything that's already there in place. But if that's not how it's going to end up, I would obviously do whatever the board would require of Walmart to do to make it one, because I, you know, we still want to have, like, something I didn't mention, there was sidewalk sales, and that is mentioned in the 2017 decision. I still would like that to carry forward. So everything that's in 2017, I would like to carry forward. My approach was just to ask for what we already didn't have. So there would be the nine extra outdoor display and sales space, parking spaces, the trailers were never a part of the special permit, and the change in the, for outdoor display and sales, the change in the date annually, that the, those areas would be occupied with flora.
But, but my question pertains to the waivers, and whether we have to give notice in the newspaper of the waivers. So because you didn't have, specifically to the trailers, you didn't have those in 2019, or in 2017, so the waiver for the visibility, you couldn't have applied for that in 2017 or 19 because they weren't there.
Right.
So my question to Brian is, do we have to renotice this if we're going to give a waiver?
So, yeah, I mean, I guess, I am a little, I was surprised when you said these other sections, because they weren't, they weren't applied for in the application.
Mm-hmm.
You were saying, well, we're just adding on to the 2017, but like the chair just said, that was, the waivers were not part of 2017.
Right.
The conservative safe bet is that the legal ad should cover everything that they're asking for.
Right, including those new waivers, because I don't think those were part of it either, were they?
No.
The, I'm, I wrote them down, so I have them here.
Yeah, I mean, so the, the special, I'm looking at the application, here, I'll put it up. I'm looking at the application right now, so.
Right, the 33F4 and 11 weren't applied for before either.
I don't, I don't see how they could have, because they weren't there.
They didn't apply, right. Madam Chair, if I could just also, Brian, while you're looking things up, maybe get a clarification. We're asking for 19 additional trailers than the two by right. Do I have that correct?
Correct.
Because we also, I think, are stating this as 21 seasonal trailers, so it's really not 21 seasonal, it's 19 seasonal?
Well, they're asking for a total of 21.
Total of 21, but 19 of them would be the dates you speak of, September 1st to January 7th.
Well, the application says 20, it says 19 additional seasonal trailers for a total of 21 seasonal trailers, so.
The trailers.
They'd all go away.
They'd all go away.
They all come in and they all go away.
So the two that will remain, let's say, aren't going to remain, they all leave, and they're all seasonal?
Yeah, they're saying 21.
All right, I just want to make sure if we do have to re-advertise this, where we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's.
No, it's, it's, all 21 would be seasonal, the two that we have as of right, is part of that 21, that's seasonal, but as an aside, they all will be removed.
Okay.
Outside of.
If I were to go by there and see two trailers, they, it would be allowed, because they're allowed by right for up to 180 days.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make that point.
Yeah, I understand that, I just.
And by the way, that's what got us here to begin with, right? Because when I went by and saw 21 trailers, I didn't count them, but I just knew that, hey, wait a minute, something's, I don't remember this as part of the 2017 decision, and I like to think I remember a lot of these decisions, but not over that amount of years, and certainly not finite details. But I just knew it wasn't correct, and, you know, and I'm glad you're here before us, asking to get this right, but I just want to make sure we have our counts right.
Yes, I do too. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So Brian, do we need to re-advertise?
I think that we.
I mean, I, this is my fault for not seeing that there were additional waivers requested, but they weren't listed.
Right.
So.
Well, I think we're just getting this news tonight, right?
Would you like to poll the board?
I, I unfortunately think that the right move is to re-advertise.
I think so too.
I think so too.
Well, so we can get our questions all out and continue this, right?
Right.
Yeah, you can get, you can actually get everything you want out now, in terms of hash, hammer out everything, and then we could re-advertise and vote at a later date.
Okay, I think that sounds.
Okay, I, I think so too.
I think that makes the most sense.
I think we should reiterate the conditions.
Did we lose?
Lost something.
Oh, no signal.
Well, the mics are still on, so we're good.
Oh.
Madam Chair, you're, you're on there.
Okay. All right, so I think we, we will have to re-advertise, but as suggested by Mr. Sackely and other board members, why don't we kind of confirm everything that you're going to ask for, what we're willing to kind of give, and then we'll see if that's okay with you. We can do the, the advertisement, put it on for another meeting, and then we'll just come in and vote the way we kind of decide that we're going to vote tonight. Does that work?
Yes, and just so we are on the same page, to make things easier, I think I had supplemented the application with a memorandum, came in a bound little pamphlet, right. I don't have, it's on page seven, it begins on page seven, and what I did there in the conclusion, because I needed to keep track of what it was that we were asking for, I think that's everything that we are asking for, so.
Well, it should be, it's everything that's in the original application here, and there should be those two, those other two waivers that you were talking about.
Right, so am I submitting something different? Am I submitting a new application, or am I supplementing it, or?
I think the only thing I need is, see, this, this first page, so this is your application.
Correct.
All I need is, this was actually the second page, all I need is on this special permit.
Yep.
All the relief that you're asking for.
Okay, okay. Yep.
But, but just to clarify, on page seven, you have two waivers, but you're really looking for three, right?
I have one. Yeah, the height, screening.
The duration.
Duration, number of spaces. Is that 19 instead of two?
Yes.
Right.
If, if there's no carryover from 2017.
I need to add that.
Then we're trying to incorporate everything into this.
Yep.
We need to add.
Okay, so I'm basically going to write.
Four.
Yeah.
Well, Ma- Well, Ma- Madam Chair, I have a couple additional questions, but before you go out to the public, because I think we're still going to play this out, right?
Yeah, and, and don't forget, I believe it's on page four, you have the waiver nine point three C in the performance standards, you'll have to list that one too.
That's included, I summarized everything in the back, page seven to eight.
Seven and eight.
Oh, so maybe it's on page eight, I was looking on page seven.
Oh, I apologize, yeah, it's there.
Okay, okay, yes, okay, okay.
But to that, I'm not.
Two conditions as well, right?
We have to add the conditions that we would like.
From 2017?
No, I'm, I'm just talking about the conditions you agreed to tonight, which was flora only, and the condition to mark the asphalt outlined, the forty-five particular spots. And Madam Chair, if I may, through you, ask a couple of follow-up questions to that.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So I noticed on the plan, there are, it shows two crosswalks, I don't believe those crosswalks are there currently, these are just striped crosswalks on the asphalt, is that correct? If you could just, yeah.
I'll get up and speak. Greg DeBona with Bowler. So when we first filed the plan to show, basically document what's been happening out there for the past couple of years, one of the suggestions was to provide the crosswalks so that the employees and the customers have a designated access point from that storage area and display area to the, the front door, and to back to where the Garden Center is. So those two new crosswalks, which are shown, kind of like, looks like piano key marking, they are also accompanied with new signage, like stop for pedestrian signs, like you would typically see along the front of the Walmart.
And, and thank you, I think that's a good idea, and I, this may be more for the store manager, but I know, for me, as one of your patrons, sometimes it's kind of hit or miss whether those doors are actually open in the back of the store. Is the intent that between these dates, that those doors will always be available? I guess, how are, how are customers paying for this product? You know, I know, for instance, like, when I go to BJ's, I feel like I have to grab the plant I want on my way into BJ's so I can pay for it inside at BJ's registers. How is one paying for stuff in these forty-five stalls that you have designated?
So there's different ways we pay. April first through the July thirty-first is when our doors are typically open for the outdoor sales. They open at eight AM to eight PM every single day. With that, if there is someone ordering a bulk order, say they want fifty bags of mulch, twenty bags of dirt, that is, can be rang up through our registers, we have place cards at every single register, and we can ring that up without having to bring all that product inside. So we'd be able to process that, and then they would be able to move their car closer to then grab that product.
So, but if somebody was grabbing a six-pack of, say, tomato plants, they have to take it from this parking spot area, walk in these crosswalks, and go inside your store and pay?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I just, so no registers are out there, nothing like that?
No registers are out there.
And I believe that came up, that was, the reason I asked that is that was a concern in 2017 with the original decision, and why the area of the parking lot was chosen, because we were worried about pedestrian foot traffic and, and how people would pay. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Sackely, I have one more question. How did you leave it with Mr. King, as far as how he wants to handle any of the merchandise that they have up on the pallets?
So he had, he just had a quick question of basically, how, how much fertilizer is going to be put out here related to stormwater? And it, I, I think it got down to the point where it was just that there might be some potting soil with maybe a little bit of fertilizer, but I don't believe you guys require a stormwater permit, he didn't, he didn't.
Sorry, let me just speak on that again. So I think what happened was when we were noticing for all the typical bag goods type activities, we might have noted fertilizer, pesticides, except like that. But the reality is Walmart doesn't utilize that in this seasonal storage area. Any of that product has to stay inside the building and within the Garden Center, so there would be no pallets of fertilizer or pesticides or anything. So what we're talking about is the pre-potted soil that comes in your plants, sometimes has the fertilizer additive already in it, or the, the nutrients to make the nice tomatoes actually look good for when they're out for sales. So you have the potential of some of the rainwater leaching through that, and then getting down onto the surface, and then draining all the way down to the inlet, which is at the very far end of the, the parking lot. You know, the reality is, I, I know this has been out there being used like this for years, and we're not asking to change any of what we've been doing. So the current stormwater infrastructure that's on there today is already handling the runoff and diverting the water to the basin and being treated through the normal stormwater process. We weren't looking to implement anything new, because we're not changing anything that's, you know, been out there.
I, I think, I think as long as there's a condition saying that no fertilizer pesticides will be, will be sold outside, it should be fine.
And I just want to clarify, I guess, because I think, John, you brought up a good question about the material out there. I just want to clarify, for when we say fauna and, and plant material.
Well, flora, yeah.
Yeah, flora, I, I also mean the bag goods, so mulch, topsoil, sand.
Again, I, I'm just, these things have morphed into shovels and, and lawn mowers and, and scarecrows and, you know, all this, you know, types of stuff.
I know what you're talking about, it's not the full Garden Center, it's not like what you would see at some of the other.
If you guys take a condition of flora, that checks it.
Okay, as long, as long as we're still able to do stone and, and soil and that sort of bag.
Flora and terra.
Because that, that's the, the backwards seven portion.
Actually, he's right about fauna.
Is, is, is what that stuff is.
Yeah.
The, the square that looks more closest to a right angle is all your plant tables, exactly, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, we will go out to the audience.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. A thought in my mind was, this young lady is a manager right now, and as you said, managers will come and go. As a condition, I would certainly ask that any succeeding manager be required to read this document of what they can and can't do, and sign a form saying that they understand what they've read, or ask questions until they can sign the form. Because I would hate to think that down the line, two or three managers is going to do what they think is right, and because they didn't understand what they were supposed to read. And that's from experience that I ask.
Yes, and it's with our experience too. But the, the store manager has indicated that she has put all the procedures in place in her computer, just to notify any future managers of the situation with regard to all of these requirements. And that's something that wasn't in place before, and I think that's why we had the situation that we did with regard to, a new store manager comes in and, you know, doesn't really comply with any of our rules. So I think she has put some procedures in place to ensure that that does not happen again.
I'm just personally, I'm just asking for a guarantee of that, for the town's protection, and for the manager's protection, that they understand. And that's from experience why I'm asking for it.
Yes, maybe the store manager can address that as far as, like, what happens, like, in the, the line of succession, with regard to manager to manager.
So your concern is very valid. What will happen is if I am no longer at that store, if I go to a different store, when you have to apply for trailers, because they don't just show up, you have to go into the system to apply, same thing with anything seasonally, whether it's plant racks or resin or anything, you have to go through a system, and through that system, everything in the first top of the page, you can't go anywhere else, has all those local ordinance and town ordinances. So you really can't bypass that when you're looking for, at least for Walmart, looking for, to request trailers, or request additional outs, outside fixtures, or anything that we need to have all that. So that is on the first page, you have to accept that, that you saw that to even go through to order anything. So that is something that, even if I'm not here, even if I have someone lower than me or someone that precedes me, they would be able to have to read through that, at least through Walmart's side of everything, to be able to process forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Madam Chair, just a comment, I just, I'm still a little foggy on how the old decision is meshing with what we're proposing tonight, and, and not in the way of the trailer count, and not in the way of the parking space count, but just, I guess, especially with these, because your drawing does say proposed display racks, but those racks are already allowed through the 2017 decision. So I just, just want to make sure we're, we're covering all the bases here, and that between old and new, and new relief you're requesting tonight, that all this is getting covered one, in one big package that we'll vote on, it sounds like that will continue after maybe our comments, so.
So my first thought, my thought process on that is this, to be safe, I'll just do that page two over again, and I'll put everything in there.
Okay.
And this way, because there are things that we want to carry forward, that are not subject to tonight, because I took it as an amendment or modification, it was just going to enhance what's already in place. But if we're doing this new, and it has a new docket number, then I will supplement the application, and I'll put everything that's in the 2017 decision, what we have, plus what we're asking current, all together, this is what we're asking for in one place. How does that sound?
Yeah, I mean, the idea was that we were going to have, what I, what I requested was one plan showing everything. So that's what, that's what this, that's what, that's what this is.
That's what I want to see too.
It's just the language didn't.
Didn't follow it, right.
I, I think for both parties involved, right, the town as well, because, you know, if, if you do come in violation, the town doesn't want to be, well, which one are they in violation of, right? So we just do want one, one encompassing document.
Right.
But Madam Chair, I guess I would ask if, if the applicant wants, I mean, I would think it would make sense, even though we're not going to vote tonight, for us to kind of go through and deliberate and get our comments out.
Oh, no, I agree.
Where we're going, yeah.
A little bit of process, the only way to re-advertise is that they, you don't want to deny this right now.
No, no, we're going to continue it, right?
Yeah.
So the only question I have is whether or not we can continue with the same exact docket number.
Oh, I see, so we would.
Whether or not they would have to withdraw.
Have to withdraw?
This is, this is not a, doesn't affect anything in terms of timing, we're going to get you on the next possible meeting that's possible. But I believe in order to.
Get this right.
Get this right.
Right.
We need an official withdrawal from you, and then the new application showing everything on there, and then, like you said, everything on there in the, in words, showing what was already approved, and then what's in addition. So you were approved for thirty-six, you're asking for forty-five. Like, so through the whole, all the relief that you're asking for, the relief that you were given, and then now the new relief. And then we'll have one plan and one document showing everything.
Including all the waivers.
Every, everything that is not, that does not reach our performance standards.
Right.
And the conditions.
Yeah.
Well, they don't have to apply for that, we're going to, we're going to.
We'll, we'll, we'll force them.
Okay, so that, that's a good point, I do, so there are conditions that are applicable to the 2017 decision. That would be for the board to implement, correct? So you, I mean, I'm.
Well, we, you wouldn't ask for those, so.
We're asking you.
Yeah, we, we would put that in our decision.
Okay.
Or, sorry, the board would put that in their decision.
So I'm just asking for relief, that's all I'm asking for, and listing it out, and.
Well, fir- first step is a one-sentence withdrawal, so we withdraw this application docket twenty-three five zero eight two, and then the next email is the new application. We don't need any new plans if these plans show everything, which I believe they do, but if they don't, that's, if they don't show those, the waivers that we're talking about, they're not showing, you wouldn't show the height on a site plan.
Yeah, but, but we do, we do call out the list of the timing and the duration and all the other information. The question I have is, do you want all the waivers listed on the plan?
The waivers do not need to be listed on the plan, the waivers need to be listed in the application.
In the application.
Yeah.
So the only thing I would potentially do to this plan is potentially just show what this striping suggestion was, in terms of adding some striping call out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would want that.
Yeah, if you guys want any plan changes, now is the time.
I don't need a plan change, I just need verbiage that says after these dates, for those, for the trailers, they're to be removed.
We can put that as a condition, they've already agreed to it.
I'd rather have it verbally in there.
Yeah, in the application.
And Madam Chair, I would ask.
Say that again, please?
Uh, that, please, yeah, go for it.
After the January seventh date, that the twenty-one trailers will be physically removed.
From the site. And Madam Chair, I would ask, considering, it doesn't seem like we have a case on, or any cases on for October seventh, if the applicant would be willing to continue this to October twenty-first.
Those are the time.
We gotta read, we gotta advertise, so there's no way we can get them on the seventh.
It's the twenty-first.
So.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, maybe we can get that, I'll, there's no doubt we're going to get you on the earliest meeting possible, so, whatever it is. No application fee, any of that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Have the trailers on site. I think we have the, so, yeah, the, the one issue, and I know we're.
Just come up to them.
Sorry, Craig DeBona again from Bowler, the one issue, and I know we're, we're kind of sitting up here asking for forgiveness, but there's already trailers on site again, the trailers are there.
So you're in violation currently.
Absolutely, but, but we're in process, and what I'm, what I'm asking.
As long as they're in front of us.
Are we able to prolong any violation letters until we get through this process?
Of course.
Okay, thank you, then that's.
We, we knew that they were there. We knew that they were there.
The good news is, it speaks even better than the plan, because they're already laid out the spots pretty much where the plan shows, so if you were curious as to how the twenty-one looks, you can drive by and you can count the twenty-one that are out there right now.
So we, we can't, we are able to get this on the ten twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay.
The legal ad is due by the twenty-sixth, so I have three days.
Okay.
I'll write it tomorrow.
Pressure's on.
It'll be done.
Well, you need my application.
I need your, yeah, I need, well, yeah, you, I just need that one page.
Yep.
Showing all the relief.
Yep.
Literally just that one page to get the legal ad out.
I'll get it to you tomorrow, I want, then I would request that we review it, just to make sure that you think I.
Yeah, let's talk tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, great, that sounds great.
And I have one other, one other question. When we list the conditions, not only do we have the conditions that we mentioned tonight, we're going to have to reimpose those conditions from 2017, correct?
Yeah, we could, I mean, that's easy, we have the decision in hand, and we just go through those conditions, so, and we'll have it in our hand.
Okay.
So that's easy.
Okay.
It's actually 2017 and 2019, just.
Yes, no, no, I know.
There's two decisions.
Yes, yes. Okay.
I think it's time to entertain a motion for.
Comments?
Well, no, 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 I, I think people want to do comments first, just so that they know everything, so when we come back next time, it's just a matter of voting.
No surprises.
Right, okay, comments, John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, at first look to this, I must say I was opposed to grant twenty-one containers where we allow two. You know, I, I can see the modification in the parking stalls, you know, thirty-six to nine, nine more, up to forty-five, I don't, I don't see that as a huge increase, I do believe that where you're showing it's a little bit more defined, and, and obviously taking the condition to mark the area, I think, gives a, a good, I guess, delineate of where it's going to be, so I like that, and the crosswalks. But I think as we drill down into this and see that it's four months, as, as Ken has pointed out, the trails will be removed, you know, I think I would vote favorably on this, given that we, you know, have the condition of flora only, and we mark the spaces, and that the trails are removed, so I would vote in favor, if we can get one encompassing document that. If we can get one encompassing document that spells itself for not only your current manager, but even if she takes vacation, things work, so that's where I sit right now.
Okay, Ken?
Yeah, I would be in favor as well if there was also a condition on the reflectors on the dead area with these cinder blocks.
Ken?
Thank you. I was okay with the parking spaces, that's, to me, that's not that big of a deal. My whole thing was is, having the trailers removed, I love the fact that they're behind the building, and there's nobody here in opposition that I have seen, so, you haven't seen, so I'm okay with it, and I would vote for it with all those conditions.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I would vote for this too, with all of the conditions we've talked about.
Okay, and I would vote for this too with all the conditions we have in place, and to the store manager, I just want to compliment you, most of the time when the store managers come in, they don't really have a handle on any of the information, and it seems as if you did your homework, you understand the process, and you were able to answer every one of our questions, so thank you very much for that.
Agreed on that.
So I guess we need.
So it sounds we're going to make a withdrawal?
Well, I think they, they.
They're going to request a withdrawal.
To save you an email, they can withdraw right now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. To ask for a withdrawal, and continue us, we need to actually withdraw.
So we do have to withdraw?
Yes.
Because you'll get a new docket number.
You will be back on the 1021, at the 1021 hearing.
Right, but I think we have to withdraw now.
Correct, yeah, save you an email, you could literally do it this very second.
We'll make a motion and accept your withdrawal.
You'll have a new docket number now.
Right, I think we have to because we can't continue it.
Right.
Right.
So you're going to ask us.
We've done all the heavy lifting, so.
Walmart would request a withdrawal at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to allow a withdrawal of this application at this time.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so it passes. See you on the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Scott.
Yeah. Madam Chair, motion to it, to close the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Danvers.